This is the. February third meeting of the Essex Junction Planning Commission. It has been. Rewarned as a remote only meeting, so anyone who was at Lincoln Hall. You may not be getting in if you're. Online, I can see you on screen here. We do not have a quorum yet. There are three of us here voting members of the planning commission. But we have our guest speaker and we have an agenda, so we're gonna start going anyway. Item one is audience for, excuse me?
Go ahead.
Item one is audience for visitors. Which I guess by definition, we may not really have any. Maybe one or two names I don't recognize, but I think they're related to the. Meeting officials here. Is there any member of of the audience that I would like to say anything that about? A subject that is not on the agenda tonight? All right, nearing none. We'll move on to item two additions and amendments to the agenda. And which I don't, Robin, we don't have any, right? We've got everything.
No, nothing for me, John.
Yeah. So item three is review and approval of the meeting minutes from our last meeting, January sixth. I've read the minutes. I have no comment. Does anyone else have a comment on the minutes?
Um, they look fine, but don't we need a quorum to?
You're correct, and we haven't even, well, there was no motion made, so we'll just table those until we have a quorum. Thank you. Item four is to elect the vice chairperson to replace. Our recently departed.
Steve. Replace Steve.
Right, but we don't have a quorum, so we can't do that either.
We have a quorum.
Yeah. So we, yeah, we we wish Steve well and his expanded. Business capacity, I guess you would say. But we'll miss him terribly on the board. He was very valuable, so. I guess that brings us to the work session. We'll circle back to the minutes and and. And to electing a vice chair if. Additional members of the planning commission show up.
I just left a message for Andy. I don't have Patrick's number.
You don't have Patrick's number, right? If any of you guys have Patrick's number, you can try and. Grab them. Okay, so. Regina, welcome and take it away. You've you've prepared. A lovely presentation for us tonight, and I'll let you have that.
Okay, thank you. Um, let me just get this going correctly. I think I have to share first before I. Somebody needs to make me be able to share my screen. Robin, can you do that?
Well, as you heard, I was getting a tutorial on this thirty seconds where the meeting started from Tommy. I do have a green button that says share screen.
Yeah, so if you go to participants. It should pop up everybody that's in the meeting and like a list.
Yeah, yeah, no, I've got those. I've got you all on the screen.
So there should be three buttons. Next to my name, and if you click on those, it should let you. Oh. So town meeting TV is having trouble because they think the meeting is supposed to start at six thirty.
It's always six. So I'm gonna make you host. It wasn't funny with my computer. It wasn't. Three dots. It was just you went over and said more. But so I'm gonna make you host.
Yeah, that'll work. Okay, super.
That that should be you know. There you go.
Oh. All right, can everybody see that like how you're supposed to see it?
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay.
Perfect.
Super, all right, so. Um. So everything that we're talking about tonight are the things that we talked about at the last meeting. Where I just wanted to get a good sense of what are the other items the planning commission wants me to focus on? And then we'll go through the process of like, we'll bring chunks of the chapters with all the edits tracked changed in there, and so you can go through them. After we ideally get through this tonight. So one of the items to discuss on that list was residential density. And I think Phil, you were asking about this in the sort of R one, R two districts, but. It sounded like it made sense to just let's sort of look at this across the board. So what you see on the screen right now are just some thresholds. The first two are thresholds that we use in the state of Vermont for various designation programs. So the first one is four units per acre minimum threshold. For the neighborhood development area. So you folks have that designation in your village. It matches the village's designation perfectly. Um, there are. There's a number of different state designations, but the other ones step up the density a little bit further, particularly the growth center designation. That's not right. Sorry, that slide, that second bullet shouldn't say neighbor neighborhood development area designation again. It's really the growth center that. Gets you to the eight units per acre. Um, that's not to say that it makes any sense for you folks to be thinking about growth center designation. It's just to say that there's added benefits when you go to that. Level of density really in terms of like walkability. And then. The last bullet is really sort of just like a very broad kind of national perspective on. If you want to get to a decent level of bus service. At the minimum, you probably need to be working with pretty decent sized areas with that minimum seven units per acre. So those are just rough thresholds to think in mind to keep in the back of your mind as you're thinking about. Whether the density as is today in the village zoning is in a relatively good place. So. Comparing to those two. Thresholds, because that that middle one is right in between the third bullet is right in between these two. So most of all the Essex Junction zoning districts meet these criteria. With the exception of these three. Um, and. The you've got a few zoning districts that are. Calculated a little bit interestingly because you've got a base kind of minimum lot size, and then you can add more units with just a smaller amount of square footage to add it on to there. So for the residential office. It it easily meets the ten thousand square feet, but it doesn't quite get to the five thousand square feet if you were to think about. Trying to put four four lots on a on a lot, four units on a lot. Um. And but it's really pretty close to that, so I don't think in and of itself residential office. Probably doesn't really require an increase. Then. Your R one and your R two. So those are the two zoning districts that only allow. Single family home plus an accessory dwelling unit, of course. In those districts and the. Our one district at fifteen thousand square feet doesn't meet either of those standards. The R two zoning district does hit the ten thousand square foot threshold, but not the five. Um. But having said that. You do have the density bonus provisions in the PUD section. And it allows density bonus in both of those districts. You can get up to a hundred percent density bonus in the R one and a twenty five percent density bonus in the R two. So just in terms of comparing to these thresholds. There are ways already within the land development code that you can achieve these sort of base thresholds.
Do you wanna, can you go to the that the village map of the zoning?
Yeah.
On it, so we can graphically see where these areas are because really the R one districts are fairly remote from the village center. I mean, they're not.
Yeah.
You know, but they're. They're they're always a waste, but the R two districts. And it looks like the multifamilies are pretty convenient to most of the. Types of. You know, the triggers like to transportation routes and the walkability. So if we were gonna think about modifying something, I think we'd want to follow the triggers and. Think about those before we worry about the R ones. My opinion.
Yeah, so just, I don't know if anybody's listening at home, so the yellow. Is the R two, and you sort of see that kind of as John's saying, sort of all donutting basically the the village. And then the R one is this lighter yellow. That's that's mostly up up in this direction. Phil, I think I cut you off.
Yeah, can you clarify on the the unit aspect on because? It's per acre, and I'm assuming. Most of our lots are not like they're not acres, right? So our lots, I'm assuming a general lot is our average lot is a quarter acre. So when you look at the ten thousand square feet, the four units per acre, I'm assuming that's like. One single family house on a quarter acre lot.
Yes.
Density, right? Okay.
Yes, sorry, it's a little confusing, so. Technically forty thousand square feet is an acre. But most, most of our zoning sort of like just sort of averages that forty thou you use more like forty thousand square foot is an acre, just roughly, and so. Yeah.
Regina, um, a lot, okay, so a lot. I'm looking at the, and I I opened up my book, okay? I to get the map because it's a lot larger. Yeah, and quite frankly, I mean, the neighborhood that I'm in, you know, the the Indian Acres. Um. The the Greenwood Redwood Terrace area. You know, the area around La Mole and and well, not Pleasant, but La Mole, some of these places are at, I know that my area here is is. It it's one sixth of an acre. Some of them are a fifth of an acre, some of them are a quarter of an acre, depending on the age of the development. Um, some of these are, and I'm kind of going, can I, I there's. Okay, I I walk out of my house. Okay, I literally am standing in my driveway and I can touch my neighbor's house. So um, do I really want somebody that closer if I've already haven't done a multi-family sort of thing? I've already got that kind of going here. Um, it's more like a seven, seven units. You know, with the bus thing, it really works. You know, in my neighborhood, but. It's, you know, when you've got some of the newer ones, they've got larger, you know, they're in the, you know, the fifth, the the quarters, the. You know, you've got to go really old to have these one acre lots, because they just. They don't exist except in some of our older areas. In fact, even those have been chopped up. Um, so. Things don't really get tight until we start getting multifamilies. Um. Which of course are. Scattered throughout the village, but mostly on our arterial roads.
Mm hmm.
Um, the I think you're Robin, you have to correct me if I'm wrong, but countryside, I think, is at least a quarter of an acre, maybe a third of an acre each.
Sounds right then.
Because they've maybe even got some common space in common besides. I'm not sure how that, you know, that works for them. But it's. Um, it's it's when you start looking at some of the places around, it's yet some of the larger lots in the center of. Or just off the center village center. That could have have the potential of having. Two ADUs on it as opposed to one. I can't imagine taking some of the houses down. Um, people probably get all the shape if they did. Um, but could you put two additional units if two additional ADUs were allowed? Possibly. Um. So how does, how does that? How does that work into the residential density, I guess? Is my question.
If it's just a bigger lot to begin with, you mean?
Yeah, if you've already got like. Um, like the development we saw. At forty one Maple was almost an acre. It was point nine acre. Um, we have a lot of point nine acres around here with one house on them. Um, but because that's how that this. Village was. Well, these people had to have their own wealth. Okay, they needed some space. Um, you know, there's a lot of them have those carriage houses were really carriage houses because they had they had carriages in them. Um. So you have a place for the horse and everything else to meander about when it wasn't attached. To a wagon.
Right. Yeah, so I mean, the larger lots can be subdivided if they're greater than fifteen thousand square feet, they can be subdivided, and then they can get, you know. Twice as but however many lots they can subdivide, they can they can get that many more, and then. You would also, I assume, most folks would try to sort of. Go the PUD route and see if they could get more density worked in there, too. So. Yeah, I don't know. I mean, we could also definitely give give you folks if it would be helpful. I don't know how necessary it is, but we could certainly give a. Some statistics on what the lot sizes are now in R two and R one, just to give you a sense of. Sort of the average size of them, but you could tell they're pretty, you know, like your neighborhood Diane and some of these other, these are, it's a good. Great dense village you guys got.
Yeah, um, are we? Uh, close to or or not close to the sort of the regional average for this kind of thing in? Let's say the. The transportation hubs, I mean, how do we? How do we stack up against what everyone else is doing and how do we stack up against what the recommendations are? It looks like we're we're sort of close, but not quite there on R two. Um, you know, we're not too far away at seven seventy five hundred. Square feet for a lot.
Yeah, sorry, give me a second. I need to figure out how to get back out of there. Yeah.
Um, right, where are? Well, that's residential office where seventy five hundred are two. Uh, where we're seventy five hundred.
Yep.
So that that's not that far off.
Right.
And if we've already got some protection or some allowable ways to increase that with the PUD, then. I guess I'm not feeling like we're we're way out there.
Am I, am I reading? The LDC correct that multifamilies are not allowed in R two? That's correct, right? Yeah.
Yeah.
I'm assuming the ones that are in there were grandfathered in, but.
Yeah, although I did have a question because. The I think it's the PUD section. Has a very interesting, the bonus density part has sort of an interesting discussion about how like. The multifamily would be established on the outer edge or something. You guys know the sections I'm talking about that made that definitely made me like. Scratch my head a little bit and wonder.
Know the section you're talking about, you.
Yeah, so is that? Allowable in R one and R two that if you went down a bonus density track through a PUD that you could. You know, you could do, it didn't have to be a detached structure. It could be like. Townhouses or row houses or have like a or more of an apartment style feel. I couldn't really tell.
Yeah, I remember early on, I. I'm not sure the way it ended up. I think Village Walk. They proposed duplexes. I'm not sure if they ended up building them or not.
Uh, Village Walk has duplexes. They're they're not. And I walked through there frequently and and the duplexes versus the singles are. Nicely mixed in. You don't necessarily notice the rhythm changing dramatically when you walk by, so. Uh, you know, that neighborhood is really seems to have. It's took hold immediately and has just been great, so. They did a nice job blending all that together.
It's the, okay, section six oh one. Are multifamily residential ones is a single family home is allowed per lot unless reviewed as a planned development. Um, so that one is slightly restrictive. Um, it forces you to do a plan unit development to get more than one.
Yeah, so the the straight answer to your question is, Phil, that it can be done. Just not by right, you know, not like.
Yeah.
Easily like you sort of have to go through another process to get.
Yeah, I guess, I guess. So let me say my intention for wanting to look at this is that if you follow what's going around the country, it's it's being found increasingly. Uh, obvious that single family zoning has affected the housing crisis greatly because, I mean, I think California just. Ban single family zoning in the entire state. And so.
Wow.
Looking at, looking at how can we create infill or allow? For more density. I don't know if we need to go at it through a density route. I'm open to like allowing duplexes double two units within some of our zones. That maybe that maybe takes a little burden off of. The, you know, a homeowner or a developer to make make a single family home into a duplex. I know, I think it was one of the very first. Meetings that I was in on the commission. We had someone on Church Street come in and try want to get approval to. Change their single family home to a duplex, and we were kind of confused because it really wasn't necessary, because I think it looks like they fall into the. The multifamily district. Multifamily residential three, but that sort of thing, this kind of my intention of looking into this is. Someone wants to take their single family home, make it into a duplex. So should make that easy.
Um, I'll say I lived in a in a duplex in Buffalo that looked. Indistinguishable from a single family home. Uh, just because of the way they they split them by floor and not, you know, vertically and. And so I I guess our, you know, if our intention is that they look normal and residential and, you know, whether there's one family in there or two families, I'm not sure we. Really care. I think probably the biggest issue ends up as parking. And how many cars are automatic, you know, like all of a sudden in the driveway and how is that managed? And does that have a bigger impact on the streetscape and the rhythm of life than anything else? So I I guess I would, I would be in favor of allowing it as long as it's not. An obvious change to the neighborhood character.
I I totally agree. Those are some of the best duplexes you see in the village. And and those are, those are ones that people enjoy living in, I think, too. I think there's character. It feels like a home. Um, you don't feel like you're living in a box with a hundred other people.
Yeah, well, the the broken up Victorians and some of the things on Pearl Street. I will say definitely are non-traditional and probably feel very homey homey because they've been made that way or because reconstructed that way. Um, versus your apartment boxes that we've got. I'm sure that there's. If there was some way of doing that. Um. You know, we we love them. If you if you didn't know they were broken up, you wouldn't know. Uh, some some of them have been done now.
Yeah, to be clear, my intention is not to allow people to just raise houses and put up apartment buildings.
Yeah, and I think.
I want to go either.
Yeah. I think if you just, you know, simply permitted duplexes as well in the two districts, you could, you know, the. It's the same thing with an accessory dwelling unit. It's not gonna, it's unlikely to be like all of a sudden, a year from now, everybody's gonna put duplexes in, you know, it's just, it's really why? Prohibit it for the few people that might actually want to be able to do it. Um.
We'll say that, you know, an accessory dwelling unit in a house. One of the spaces. Has to be. Occupied by the owner occupant. A duplex both can be. Investment. It doesn't have to be an owner occupant anymore. So and you know, in some ways you can get the same result with a single family homes, a duplex. But you keep a resident in one of the structures. Whereas with them, they're all residents, but once. One owns the property, whereas in a duplex, they can both be renters, so.
Are you sure about that?
I'm just, sorry.
Are you sure about that? I thought there was some restriction. I know in some towns there are some restrictions that. Um, even though with the duplex, once the owner has to be in one of those duplexes.
I'm gonna work that down, but.
Yeah, usually that that is not the case.
Okay.
Um, and you know, it's really sort of a slippery slope even in the state statute for accessory dwelling units, because when you really think about fair housing law. Um. The government body shouldn't necessarily be dictating whether it's ownership or rental, right? Because that's. That is sort of discriminatory, typically discriminatory against renters. Um, but we allow it in ADUs and state statutes, so it's a little bit weird, but. Uh, typically for duplexes. Um, it. Yeah, there should be no, there should be no government say over. How those are, what the tenure of those units are. That makes sense.
Um. There is a disturbing national trend, which we heard a little bit about, that. Many housing units are being purchased by larger. Interests and and then turned into rentals. Which has the effect of making it harder for people who want to buy a home or have homeownership. Able to do that drives the prices crazy. Uh, because the stock of available for sale houses diminished. So I think in the spirit of trying to keep. Homeownership available at a reasonable price for people. Um, you know, we have to be really careful not to. Uh, create situations that would make that situation worse. And and that may be governmental, but you know. We're we're fighting an amazing battle for affordable housing right now, and I think, you know, there shouldn't be any tools off the table.
I might say we're. Past the point of housing being affordable in Chindin County. But I mean, one way housing is affordable is if you can buy a duplex and rent the other side out. That's what I did in Burlington, my first house, so.
Yeah, but how does that, does it work the same for you if you? I mean, you don't care which. You don't care if you're a renter, whether your other half is another renter or an owner, do you? I mean, it's. It's just available housing at that point. I mean.
If I'm a rent, if I'm a renter, I I think if I was a renter, I would. I think it would be nice if the other. The other side of the duplex was the owner. It's a little bit more of a.
Well, I I'm not taking a position. All I'm saying is if it's a accessory dwelling unit, then you know, one of the units is going to have owner in it. If it's a duplex. Then no control, and maybe that's fine. We just want to know that. Just understand that.
So my question is, is that could it? Could we put in regulations that they were allowed to have two ADUs? As opposed to, and I know that some houses get additions on them. Um, I know that some addition has been turned into ADUs. But there are some properties that could have not just that addition, but they could. Quite frankly, they could turn something over the garage into an ADU also. But our regulations.
I wouldn't have a problem with that down at all.
Well, I don't have a problem with that either. I'm just saying that, you know, if we wanted to encourage. Um, that density. Um, that density. Um, and but keep the, the neighborhoods looking like. Uh, it's all residential as opposed to starting to be commercial rental. Um, that, you know, that might be one fashion to do it is to allow somebody to put addition on their house. When they already have an ADU going on the property.
Yeah, it, from an enabling statute perspective. Accessory dwelling units are laid out as basically the bare minimum of what you can do. You can be as permissive as you want to be about it, so I don't, I don't see anything. That would be problematic if you wanted to allow two accessory dwelling units per sing, per uh, single. Detached house.
I, I know that, well, just before I came on the board. Um, that uh, there had been a permissive. Environment because there are a lot of uh, developers who were on the board on the commission. Uh, and infill happened and people got upset and that's putting, putting it kindly. Um, and so the rules changed because people were. Were not thrilled with all the infill that happened very quickly, it was definitely taken advantage of. Um.
When was this?
This was.
Uh, what, ten years ago?
Ten.
Or less.
Fif, yeah, somewhere ten fifteen years ago.
The thing is, some of the infill housing, I mean, you, you buy a house, everybody's in their lots. All of a sudden, your neighbor, you know, puts a, a, a livable structure in. You know, eight feet away from your side yard setback and. And all of a sudden, you have a brand new issue that you never had before and it, it, it has a larger impact. Than other forms of development to the neighbors. And, and that really, um, you know, it seemed like there was a lot of kind of shoehorning going on and. It, it definitely increased the density, it was, it was good for some people and it was just horrible for others and. And it's very hard for the planning commission to sort of regulate that and say, oh, well, it's okay here, but you know, it's not okay here. Um, it puts a lot of pressure on the process to be fair and. And uh, and still kind of maintain the character of the neighborhood. Which by definition will change if you start essentially doubling the number of units on, on the parcels. Uh, so, I, I think we're a little near, anybody, you know, those of us who were there for some of that are a little nervous about. Um, getting into that again.
Yeah, it's, it's not, it's not an easy thing to do, I think we hear, I mean, you, uh. You hear everyone talk about housing crisis, housing crisis, I think as a planning commission. Aside from inclusionary zoning, one other tool, the only other tools we have to address the housing crisis is how do we create more housing? That's, that's the thing we have to look at is create more housing and so. Ultimately, we're deciding, are we going to try and create more housing or are we not going to try and create more housing? Or are limited to PUDs in certain areas or something like that?
Yeah, and, and I guess what I, what I think is some of these accessory dwellings where. You know, somebody had a garage or they had a, you know, a garage attached to their house with a breezeway or something and. And the garage turns into an accessory dwelling, you know, like nobody bats an eye that much about it because nobody built anything, but. The next person that comes along and doesn't have the garage yet wants to build the garage and all of a sudden that becomes a ADU. Uh, you know, that causes more excitement because uh, all of a sudden there's a new structure and you know, that new structure takes away. Somebody's view or it's a shadow or it's headlights or it's more noise or it's too close to the property line or. Or it's close enough that you're bothered by it, you know, it, it, it's a big change to somebody. And, and it's hard to say, no, you're not allowed to do that, or we, we feel your pain, but. It's okay, we're trying to make more density, you know, these are the same conversations we've had as we replace smaller. Housing with larger multifamilies, uh, you know, it's, it's a shock to somebody. That this change is happening. And, um, you know, we, we need to look at how we handle that. Um, you know, carefully because it's, it's, it's a village that has a particular character to it that is. It is trying to get denser, we've been telling people that for, for a decade or more. That the goal is to make it denser and, and so. That's, that's gonna cause a little discomfort here and there. Uh, you know, so how do we, how do we manage that then? And I, I'm looking at the chart here and I'm going, well, you know, the R one. By the time I'm that far away from the village center, I'm thinking, you know, okay, I need a little breathing space, maybe it's not so bad, but if they have a way. Uh, to increase that density by our regulations already. Whether it's a PUD or, or all of a sudden, uh, I mean, we're, we're gonna be asked on this accessory dwelling, you know, we've been charged with. With trying to improve or assist with, with modifying our regulations. Uh, by uh, the trustees and some agreement with the housing committee and, and others that. You know, they, they need us to help them solve that, so it's coming. And, and uh, uh, you know, maybe that's a nice way to do it, it's just okay, accessory dwelling units are fine in. And by right in the following scenarios. Another, and, and if you, and if you need more density, you then you need to come in as, in, um, you know, in a PUD and tell us what you're doing.
So, um, I agree with that, John, um, but I'm looking at the map. And what would help me is if our map, instead of saying it's R one, it told me that it was a school. Because our high school and our ADL. Are very large lots, that somebody didn't know that they were schools. Okay, they would go, why do you have this incredibly huge lot? Okay, we have um, shaded the, this, this CVE property. Um, but I think we need to shade our school property so that when you look at this and go. Oh, look at all this, this is exciting, you've got all this property, no, we don't, okay, it's already booked um, for education. Um. So I think some of that is going on, um, I mean, there's. One lot, I think it was supposed to have a school on, but I'm not sure what its zone is now, open space. Um, that. Now, it's, uh, I think we need to have some truth in advertising here when you start looking at some of this stuff. Um, and one of them might be to say, you know, maybe put in, it's a school property.
That's all fine, but it's not, not really helping us with our, are we, are you asking us to decide something tonight, Regina? Or give me some direction on this residential density, like whether we want to actually change any of these numbers or. Whether we think our existing um, PUD allowances are sufficient?
Yeah, and, and I think, you know, I think particularly it's, it's. I wouldn't necessarily. Well, I mean, there is a couple of different ways that you can do this to get to allow somewhere density. Uh, the easiest is to allow duplexes in both of these zoning districts. Um, the, uh, and you, you know, you could still do that with some. With some parameters on it, as it is in both of those districts, it's only got a twenty-five percent building coverage. So you can't really, you can't like just max out those lots in any way. So you could allow people to have a duplex, but, but keep that twenty-five percent building coverage. Um.
Is that total lot coverage or just building coverage?
Total lot coverage is forty.
Okay.
So you could still do parking and stuff, but the.
Right, so what I'm, what I'm getting at is if you're twenty-five percent on your house, but you're forty overall, you still gotta fit. You know, what, four cars in there somewhere? And, um, anyway, uh, so, so the opportunity is there if it's. Well done and it probably, I mean, I, I had four cars in my driveway for, you know, while my kids were at that age and. You know, that's just how it goes sometimes, so, uh.
Yeah.
Didn't change the character of our neighborhood, because you know, now, now I'm down to, you know, maybe one car in my driveway, but my neighbors have four, so. You know, because their kids are that age, but, uh, you know, it's a rotating thing, I think, you know, we've all. Seen what happens when essentially too many cars show up in somebody's yard for too long, it's. Parking on the grass and, and you know, that you get into some things that we've tried to discourage, but don't necessarily get. Permanently discouraged.
Yeah, and those are hard, you know, there really are hard things and they're hard, they're. They're hard things to balance and weigh because, you know, um. Uh, it will likely mean that there are some lots that are parking on their grass. But it means that, I don't know, however many more households are housed that aren't today. Twenty, twenty-five, maybe, who knows, I'm like making up numbers as to how many people would take advantage of this and do it. And maybe a tiny percentage of those would have a parking problem, like it's just, it's hard to figure out how to weigh. The issues.
Um, Diane, you and I have probably been on the commission longer than anyone and maybe Robin has some experience, but. Um, how many applications have we actually had for a duplex or anything of that kind? I, I can only remember maybe one or two.
Not very many, I'm, I'm, I'm sitting here thinking. You know, we could cure a lot of these problems if we went back to trustees and say, there's a piece of land between Park Street. And, um, the Billy, Billy Shox and Spring, whatever Shox and. Why can't we make that a six, six story zone? Or a five story zone? They're talking about, about two, putting two hundred and fifty apartments in there, maybe they could get three hundred and fifty apartments in there.
So, getting a significant chunk of new housing without trying to solve it one parcel at a time. Or, you know, one, not trying to get three hundred and fifty people to decide to add one more dwelling unit to their, to their parcel.
And it's right beside the bus station, it's right beside the train station. We've got bike lanes going in. It's right where all the utilities are.
I think, uh, I'll just, I'll just say that I think anyone would be hard pressed to say that we're not. Promoting and allowing a significant amount of apartment construction in. At least the village center, which is kind of where we've had a goal of, of producing more density, it's coming, it's. We've, we've built more units than, than many other communities, uh. In our target areas and, and it's impressive and there's a couple more that have been permitted that, that haven't been started yet. Uh, so, so a, a, and then, you know, there's all the housing that was in where, uh, behind, uh, Loretta's was, that's, that's just. Crazy. Uh, amount of, of housing back there now that, that many people aren't aware of. Um, that we've been walking distance to all of those things, so. Uh, I like what we've been doing, it's, it's very, we have made a lot of progress. Um, I think this is another, what we're talking about tonight is another. Opportunity in our other districts to make some allowances that. We're hoping are only minimally noticed, noticeable and have a large impact. Uh, maybe not in unit numbers all of a sudden, but just. Uh, you know, it's gonna, gonna give that many more opportunities for people to do some.
Agree with you, John, yeah, and I would say that, you know, the, to speak on what Robin said like that is a. That benefits big developers that are gonna come in and do a multimillion dollar projects, some of the other things we're talking about. Empowers our, our current residents to do something on their own property, which is a benefit as well, I think, in my opinion.
So, I, I got one more question, uh, for Regina and Robin, maybe if, if we took R one and changed it from fifteen to ten even. Ten thousands, what does that actually allow? It doesn't act, I don't see that that really allows. A whole lot all by itself, most of those lots are built. You know, there might be a couple lots hanging out there that, you know, aren't, aren't developed, but that, that doesn't necessarily. Generate anything. Where. Discussions on, on, uh. Accessory dwelling units or allowing duplexes means that if I already had a dwelling, I could go in there and. Divide it up and, and end up with, you know, instantly doubling the number of residential units on that lot.
Yeah. You know, and we could certainly look at some form standards for not, you know, not going crazy up. Uh, here, just saying, some form standards that, uh, could. Just, you know, try to describe this concept that from a, from a outside perspective, it still looks very much like a detached home. Single detached home, but it can have two units in it.
And John, I think I'm, I agree with you as like with the R one, as you get, as you get towards, towards the R one districts and you're further out from the center. Maybe the space, encouraging the space is better, I'm, I think maybe we're, maybe working from the village center out and seeing what can be done. In those zones as well that are already more compact, just historic, just from historical. Lot coverage. And historical density.
So does that mean like maybe R two, you allowed duplexes, but R one maybe not?
I, I, I would be in favor for that, yeah.
I, I, I'm thinking that R two, because they're denser in the first place, um. Might have more of an opportunity to be accepted, uh, as, as having that, that, that density happen. Um, I. Uh, I'd, I'd rather try and encourage more ADUs in the, the R one. Um, as, as time goes on, it might, because of, because of that increased density. It might be acceptable to more, um, in, in the next permutations. Um, I, I'm thinking gradual growth here and trying to get the exception, I. I, I hear Robin, okay, and, and I feel that yes, you know, six stories it. Down here in the village center, we'd probably make a heck of a lot of sense. But the trustees were lobbied pretty heavily and they capped, capped development. Except for the industrial park at being under, under four or under, so. But I keep thinking going, you know, they have no clue that the light industrial across from ADL is actually allowed to have six stories there. Um, I don't think they really, until we do a balloon study, I don't think they'd realize what would happen there if it suddenly had a six story commercial building. Um, it would change the character of Maple Street, I think way beyond what people would even think about. Um, so which is why I'm saying, can we gradually phase this in? Okay, so that it gets, we don't have the, the infill thing we had. Ten fifteen years ago, uh, when people suddenly went, no more, um, I mean, it's. Um, I recognize that they already think this is a city, but we're already gonna, we're gonna really make it a city, aren't we? Um, you know, it's, uh, it is a city, it's urban, it's urban by, by Vermont standards. Beyond what people even think about it, um, it, it, it's just, uh. Um, I'm thinking gradual growth, uh, would be more acceptable. Uh, and if there's a means of getting that gradual growth in. Um, it, I just think of the NEFs, okay, who said, oh, no, I don't want anything to go on. But they were willing to put in some condominiums behind their place and now that, now that they didn't do that, now that's not acceptable anymore. So it's kind of going, am I wrong?
No, you're right, they, 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 they had proof for eleven at the back, anyway, there's, um, a couple of things we should remember. Enabling people to have a duplex in a hundred single family houses, doesn't mean we're gonna get. A hundred extra, uh, apartments. Um, if it worked that way, then every house. That is able to have a accessory dwelling unit, we would have about four hundred more accessory dwelling units. Looking at increasing the density by increasing the height. It's an opportunity that's more likely to happen than telling somebody down the straight grade, you can have a duplex one. So one, one's theoretical and the other one's probably actual, so we shouldn't mix those two up.
I'm in favor of both.
Yeah, well, no, I'm not saying we shouldn't do those, absolutely.
Yeah.
Sorry, I didn't, I didn't mean to imply that.
Yeah, yeah.
Well, I mean, yeah, the other thing I think. Well, I mean, yeah, the other thing I think about is like the there are a bunch of homeowners associations and some of those are one areas. They probably went, oh, they have their own restrictions, there are homeowners association, and I don't know that they would allow, even if we even if we say, hey, by the way, it's allowed, but they would allow that increased density since they've uh legislated themselves. Um I know that so some of them have no fencing allowed.
I'm pretty sure, yeah, I'm pretty sure you're right, Diane.
Yeah, so there was there, there was a change last or two legislative sessions ago that um put into some law, not zoning law, because homeowners associations um are in a different part of state statute, but it prohibited them from um disallowing ADUs. And I wouldn't be surprised if over time that um restrictions on what homeowners associations can do gets expanded. So I don't, I think probably eventually if a municipality allowed duplexes in their zoning and the homeowners association didn't. Um A, I think you could probably sue your homeowners and say association on fairly good footing. Or and two, I think ultimately state statute will catch up to that.
All right, I wanna move us along a little bit here. So there's only three of us, we can't really make any formal pronouns.
Yeah, but this is good, this was good help, so.
I think what you're hearing is support for duplexes in at least R two and and possibly R one. And uh the the whole accessory dwelling unit question, we're gonna revisit or visit in more depth all by itself shortly. Uh so we'll get to that, but I generally, we're all in favor of of being more permissive. And uh I don't know that I heard anybody interested in changing the square footage numbers, the the minimum lot sizes.
Yeah, super, thank you. All right, bicycle parking, um so this, uh you we definitely talked about this in sort of a, I think it started as bike parking, but sort of more broadly in terms of uh TDM measures, a little bit more holistically, but um essentially in terms of bicycle parking, this is what your LDC has in it today. Um so this is definitely gets at the kind of commercial visitor bike parking. So you've got, you know, relatively large-sized parking lots and uh if you're required to have at least fifteen vehicle parking spaces, um then you've got to provide a bicycle rack um as well. Um it does not include some other things that uh some other towns are starting to move towards. Um so first, uh first thing we talked about is you do have a pretty great path, bike path, um alternative path map in your comprehensive plan. And so we can definitely just sort of bring in some language to support that that plan and those um those desired pathways in the zoning regulations. Um you could also, if you wanted to step up to an official map, you could do that. Um we can, we can kind of talk about that another day, because it can take a lot of attention in and of itself, but um I think at the very least, we wanna, you know, bring some good references into the zoning regulations. Then second bullet, um so definitely folks are starting to look at multifamily housing developments and how much resident bike parking should be provided. So what you see there under the second bullet is what some of the bylaws are starting to get to. Um. Then I would also say that a decent amount of folks are doing a little bit more on the commercial um visitor bike parking uh than you're currently requiring. Um and that's uh just to sort of more define that uh on average, it's probably more like one bike parking space for ten parked vehicles. Or ten, sorry, ten vehicle parking spaces. Um then, I don't know if anybody spent any time looking into that Burlington regulation, but um you can go a whole lot deeper down this whole road.
Yeah, I've seen them, they're they're pretty impressive.
Yeah.
I I I kind of like South Burlington's, what the section that you sent, I I thought it was well done. Um and it might be the next step actually for us is in the direction that South Burlington went. Uh when it came to residential and commercial uh providing for bikes.
Um, yeah, that I would say they're probably in a in a good middle ground.
Is is bike parking defined? I was kind of curious like how they define bike parking or is it just, is it a rack? I know for Winuski, they define it as a two-bike capacity rack, but I'm just wondering if it's defined.
You can go so far down the rabbit hole on bike bicycle.
I bet, because I've seen some cool bicycle parks.
Is it secure, is it enclosed, is it, you know? It's amazing, it's pretty, pretty wild.
Yeah, and it it's they're typically in terms of like how it's defined, at the at the very least, it sort of describes the rack itself and how there should be two points of locking that you can secure your bicycle to it, um but yeah, you could, and then you can just go and go and go. Um I I will say that um I liked Diane's suggestion that South Burlington might be sort of a good uh a good middle ground with, I would say, a reference to the Association of Bike Ped uh Professionals of Essential Bike Parking, sort of maybe like as updated or something, because things will probably advance, but um it might just be a good sort of reference point if that you can kind of send people to rather than trying to dictate it.
Yeah, it's all we find uh i- in a lot of the things that we sort of try and follow somebody else's guidance. Uh if if there is an association or, uh you know, an entity that's done their homework and has, you know, I mean, the it's evolving so fast on what what people who really bicycle a lot find as a useful convenience. Um you know, that you really want to pay attention to what they're saying, because, you know, just having a bike rack out there is the bare bones of of what what's useful, and and in many cases, it's not that useful for for the, I mean, people have bicycles now that cost more than, you know, cars used to cost. And you're not gonna leave that just on a rack out in the middle of somewhere, you know, you can't it, um so um you know, if if we're really trying to promote uh bicycle friendliness, there's there's a lot coming. Um I think the the map that we have outlining, you know, okay, here are the streets that are friendly, it's it's, you still feel like you're a a little bit not as safe as you want to be on on what we have available to us for bicycle traffic. Uh but it it is trying to get better, at least on the Route Fifteen Quarter, they just put in a huge section just outside of the village, um past the fort and and on down, so uh you know, we we can be getting better, where we will eventually get there, and I think our job is to see how that is coming towards us and and make sure we take our own steps to to engage with that. Uh but the um the bike parking has been given a fairly small shake in the big picture of of what we're requiring in our multifamily units, you know, most people, you'll see them take a bike up under their porch or they'll they'll, you know, walk it up the stairs and leave it in their apartment somewhere, you know, and it's uh you know, if we really want to make improvements to that uh to that situation, we're we need to take some much bigger steps than than we're seeing so far.
Yeah, okay, so um does that make sense that I'll kind of start with South or South Burlington's language?
Um well, I mean, all all of what I said, you know, you're asking develop mostly developers, because you're you're saying, okay, no, who's gonna do this? Well, it's the next person that comes in with a with a proposal, uh you know, but you're asking them essentially to be taking up parking space size areas and devoting them to bicycles uh for secure storage, for indoor storage, for for um you know, however many per you you know, how many parking spaces per number of units. Um it it's, I won't say that it's painful, but it's, if you're not used to doing this, it's a big, it's a big deal. And
But John, we need, we may, we've been tending in that direction. Okay, we had talked about it, we've asked the PUDs to go in this direction, we've asked some of our commercial providers to provide bike storage internally, some of them have indeed done that. Um so why not take that next step? And I and I looked at South Burlington's regs and said, you know what, they've gone the next step, we're we're tending in that direction as we speak, okay, with each application, the last one, I think it was either Phil or Patrick had said, hey, how about, you know, I forget what was talking about bicycles. And, you know, you guys, Phil would have to tell me if it was him or Patrick, but it was um I'm going, we're we're get, we're going in that direction, why not tell the developers we're there, so here, let's go there, and we're gonna tell you right off that this is what we expect.
All right, I'm just saying, if you start with South Burlington, you're starting, you know, with the with the goal, with a goalpost pretty far up there, so that I that's all we can do.
I didn't I didn't pick Burlington, I picked South Burlington, come on, I mean, it's just.
All right, let's see what we can do, I I'm all for.
Okay.
And by the way.
You can always tailor.
Anyway, I think the I think the Essex ETC plan also had, uh you know, a more advanced uh a more advanced uh thought process related to bicycles and and the kind of improvements that they're talking about making in the overall bikeability along the major routes especially is um significant for us to consider.
Okay, awesome, thanks for that. Um I'll take a look. Okay, planning unit developments, um this is my last slide, uh I did also send the two chapters that kind of go along with this. Um which we can look out if we if we need to, but I'm not sure that we necessarily do, so um try to look at some of your kind of key things that were that have been struggled, that have been struggles in the planning unit development world. Um and certainly um like we've talked about before with other sections, you've got the chapter five hundred, you've got chapter five that says some stuff, and then it's kind of confusing, it doesn't say the same stuff as the chapter seven. So that can be pretty easily corrected, um and in both places. Um it should better align with what seven twenty-three says, which is uh you don't just get waivers because you ask for them and flexibility because you ask for them. A, you're coming to the table with good design, and that's why the planning commission might consider waivers. Um there is some just use of the term modifications, which should really be referred to as waivers um instead. Um you talked a little bit about how um in some cases, it's been tricky when you just see the conceptual stage, and then they come back for final, and it feels so cooked that it's hard to get them to adjust. So uh right now, the preliminary stage is just at the applicant's um own option. We could reword that to just give the planning commission the option, when you're looking at something at the conceptual stage, you could say, you know what, this is something because whether it's big or small, but there's certain things going on here that we really want to see a preliminary stage before um before final. Um.
Well, that would be a a something that we would put in there that would allow us at the sketch plan stage to to in to make them have two more steps, not just one.
Yeah.
Yeah, at our discretion, like if it's iffy. Um I I I guess I would be happy with that. Um I I think it's the language that we're using to describe what we want. And and whether that actually needs a list, like, okay, pick three things from this list, or, you know, do, you know what I mean, like, there they, we kind of suggest a few things, and then the applicants co- come in and they don't really have anything and they want to know what we want. You know, well, we're we're tired of that, we don't want that to be the process, we want the process to be, and and staff should have something very clear in their hands that they can say, look, here's the list, you know, you gotta do this stuff, you gotta do at least, you gotta at least provide a way for us to tell that this is superior design, that you've done something in your application that shows us it's not regular, you know, or we're not even gonna accept it as a PUD, you know, like go away, you don't meet the mark yet, and 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 that's not happening yet, you know, we're still getting uh you know, the applications and they get all the way to final without anybody having made that decision. Like, okay, is it a PUD or not? Well, we're telling you it doesn't match the normal uh you know, we it doesn't, you know, have the right setback, so we're telling you it's a PUD, well, that's not why it's a PUD. It's a PUD because you wanted to do something special, and then you got to trade that off against some of the normal requirements, right? So I think the threshold for determining that it is in fact allowable to come to us as a PUD needs to somehow be in there. And then i- and then making that determination, it should be clear what they did that makes this a PUD. And and if that's strengthening our list, you know, you've you've clustered your development so that open space is meaningful and has a purpose. You know, instead of, oh, well, I've got a bunch of open space, yeah, well, it's on the side of the hill, nobody can do anything with it anyway, that doesn't count as open space, you know, we we've already got the wood wood lawn trails in there, you didn't give us anything we don't have already. You know, so uh there's there's gotta be a way to to phrase this so that that it's a clear you know, product of their development that something special is happening.
Okay, that makes sense. Um and I think that's that sort of list is under seven twenty-three B, so I I see that in there, so we can uh strengthen that. Um then I did, I think I mentioned this question before, I'm just was like a little bit confused in terms of how I guess more I'm confused how often PUDs actually get come before you. And are they mostly in R one and R two, or are they really like across the board? You see them in all districts?
Yeah, I I think we're seeing residential, we used to even call them different things, like the residential PUD and a commercial PUD.
Yeah.
And I'm not sure that we need that distinction anymore, I think we we can maybe dispense with that, but 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 it, you need to trigger yourself to say it's a PUD, and then uh you know, that gets you some of the the bonuses or or the special attention that that the PUD is designed to allow. Um whi- which I I think is how the how we want to handle that, but um I I agree that that having it split across a number of chapters has been pretty confusing.
And you know, the 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 number of of PUDs, PUD-like things have been happening on Pearl Street. Uh and not in the TOD section, okay, where they they could be happening in TOD, but they're not. Uh it's actually in multifamily, I have to look at, it's either use one or two or something, it's blue.
Okay.
Um, yeah, the the other part that we're getting, um PUDs, of course, is, you know, it's it's back behind where Loretta's used to be, it's back in there, um but they put together master plan to put that all together, so um I would say that, you know, we pretty have pretty much have an idea of what they want to do. um, I would say that, you know, we pretty, pretty much have an idea of what they want to do. Um, it's,
At this point.
The ones that just like, the other day with the, the one on Maple Street, you know, it, uh, they needed the PUD to, uh, yeah, they needed something to get to maximize that site. Um, and, uh, so that's where, when, when it's coming in.
Um, okay. Um, okay, sounds good, yeah, I think I can, um, I can just get that cleaned up. So we'll see it when we start looking at the chapters. Um, so then the other thing particularly that came up a lot as a challenge was specifically the landscaping last time around.
Yeah, ju- can I just, one more thing on PUDs?
Yeah.
There is language in some of the sections that, that say something must be reviewed as a PUD. And,
Yeah.
If you remember to go and find those and, and just decide whether or not that's really what we're trying to say or not, you know, if, if, if it has more than two units on it, it has to be reviewed as a T-PUD or something. Um, I'm, I'm not sure, I'm unhappy with that, but, but it just might bear a little scrutiny.
I did see that, it's in the chapter six associated with the various zoning districts.
Yeah.
And I did, um, find it a little bit interesting, so yeah, I'll flag those, and so we can, we can see.
Yeah, because what that does is it creates the split between the developer seeking to do a PUD because there's a, an advantage to them for that.
Right.
Versus you have to do one, uh, because we say so. And, and I don't know if that's what we're trying to say, but that's the way it reads right now.
Yep. Yeah, I mean, the, generally speaking, I, I don't like PUDs at all because it's a very subjective process. It's not clear cut, it's, you know, it, you know, you can get yourself around in circles for all the reasons that you've said tonight, even if we clarify the language as best we possibly can. There, you'll still be tied up in circles. Um, so I would lean towards not unless it's really for some good purpose, but, uh, so I'll take a look at that.
And, and it's been suggested that, that clustering and, and leaving a lot of open space is enough. And, and I've struggled with that concept, like, I'm not sure that's enough all by itself. But, but there could be, I mean, in general, that's a good thing. So, uh, the question is, is that superior to something else? You know, like, it, if you just applied normal, uh, the normal development requirements, you'd end up back in the so many thousand square feet per, per unit. Uh, but, um, if you say, well, you could be denser on the same lot if you clustered these and the remaining open space is now usable for something better, you know, like, it's not just there, you know, like, like, what is it? And,
Yeah.
Yeah.
There is, sorry, this is, this is maybe a little bit of tangent, but the other thing that I wondered about, um, the, under the multifamily dwelling PUD, it's pretty clear that each multi-unit has to have a private yard of not less than seven hundred and fifty square feet.
So that kind of eliminates the so-called footprint lot, which is, by definition, basically what, a couple of feet outside your foundation?
Yeah.
What is it they call that, is that the footprint?
Footprint lot. Um, okay, is that why that's there?
Yeah, so somebody could go outside and actually put a chair out there and not have somebody walk past them and on them.
And, you know, then maybe they wanna expand and put a deck out there or something that, you know, they have at least a little bit of space to, you know, do something that's at their control and not, not the general control.
Yeah, and that's definitely, it's not for like a apartment-style multifamily. Cuz that would be tricky.
Yeah.
But anyway, okay, we can get to there.
Right, sorry.
Landscaping, so also your other thing, so this is my suggestion, hopefully it's clear in here. Um, so, again, talking about the two different places where we have your PUD standards, five eleven or seven twenty-three. The, um, it, it's not a clear enough standard for what you have to do for landscaping. Um, so, I'm recommending that you require a plan developed by licensed landscape architect. If you're coming for a PUD, so you're coming for a PUD, trying to get waivers, you're trying to do, you know, something a little bit different and unique. So, in that case, no matter the size, no matter the cost of construction, you gotta get a landscape architect-designed landscape plan. And then the cost of the landscaping that you're gonna put in is the same as your threshold that you have now, which is three percent, if it's under two fifty, two percent, I think if it's over a million.
Landscape architect licensed in the state of Vermont.
Landscape architect licensed in the city.
I'm, uh, yeah, I, I guess, I've, I've heard recently of people that have had really good experiences working with some of the, um, I don't know if they're nurseries or other vendors of landscaping that actually have a significant design ability to come in and lay something out. And I don't necessarily know that we're trying to say it has to be a licensed landscape architect, but I think the concept is it's gotta be way better than somebody coming in and saying, I'm gonna put up a couple of trees here and a few bushes over there. So, um, it's possible that maybe there's some, some flexibility around that, but I think that's a pretty good place to start. You know, it sets the bar up pretty much where you want it. And if somebody can come in and say that their landscape design has been done by a professional of some kind, maybe we have a way to allow that, I, I don't know what that is yet, but, um, maybe there's a way to allow that.
Yeah, and it just seems to me like in an urban setting, a more like city urban setting, like, this is so critical. And particularly if you're trying to do something a little bit unusual, like, it's, it's really important that you get this part right.
And, and we're seeing a lot of designs that are trying to spend some money, but not all of it. And then they wanna donate the rest of the money to whoever, we tell them they can donate it to, uh, landscaping, you know, uh, allowance or something. And, and I don't, you know, but that's, that's also been used maybe too many times or, or by people that haven't really wanted to bother thinking out a landscape plan, uh, and presenting it. So, you know, I, I like to maybe discourage that, there are places where that's highly appropriate. You just don't have enough space to put a lot of greenery and, and, you know, we also allowed, um, hardscaping to count in the dollar column.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, and that's not inappropriate in the more urban locations. So, uh, you know, as long as we can capture those, those types of, uh, possibilities, I think that would be really helpful.
Sorry, Diane, you were gonna say something.
I, I'm about to say, it, it, we, we had one developer who thought that he was doing us a favor by putting in grass. Um, and I don't consider that landscaping. Um, so, but you're right, there are individuals who have trained. So if there's, if it's, and they are professionals, that's part of their, um, bedding plan and whatever else, they put together a plan. Um, I don't know, perhaps, perhaps we're gonna ask where our, our locals here as to, you know, those individuals who are doing bedding plans and that sort of thing are, you know, what's, to what level of training are we asking for? License, you know, does say exactly where it's at, but there could be people who are indeed trained, um, to do, it's, it's not just slap a tree in, okay? We, cuz we've had people come in and say they're just gonna slap a tree in, thank you very much. Um, and then they pick something off of our list if they go that far. Oh, it's, that's, that's not what we're expecting when it's a PUD.
I do like the notion that this gets tied to a PUD, though, I think that's a great idea.
Yeah, so then you're not, oh, go ahead, Phil.
Sorry, right, no, go ahead.
I was just gonna say, then you don't, you're at least taking off the table, at least in a PUD scenario, the situation of somebody coming in with a nine hundred and ninety-nine thousand dollar, nine hundred, whatever, project cost.
And I was gonna say, we're also trying to incorporate the tree advisory committee in these areas as well, right? So, making sure that they get some sort of review or recommendations on the landscape plan. I know in that last one on Maple Street, we had a lot of people comment on the tree selection in their plan and,
Yeah.
So making sure that the landscaping is appropriate, and the selections are appropriate for our environment.
Awesome. Um, yeah, and they made a lot of good suggestions to the landscaping section itself. So, um, I'll see if it makes sense to sort of do a cross-reference too, just to make sure we, we're still capturing everything that they want, wanted changed over there, no matter the review process. Um, okay, I think that's all I have.
Uh, great. Um, so our, our, we're tasked with reviewing, um, chapter five and chapter seven, which you think are ready for our, our next round of reviews, right?
Um, I mean, you could look at those if you want, like, if you know stuff you want me to take a look at already, feel free. I wouldn't say they have everything in them that they will ultimately have yet.
But, but that's, those are the chapters that we're focused on right now, so we should.
Yeah, that's definitely got the PUD stuff in there and a whole slew of other things that we've already talked about, you'll see, marked up and comments and everything in there.
Regina, I had started to look at chapter five and discovered that, um, some things that we asked for with like formatting and, uh, cuz we had added a section in, the section got added, but the letters didn't change.
Uh, for, yeah, there's all of that, like what we've talked about when you've seen those sections before, they have not been done.
Okay. All right, cuz I was coming on, wait a minute.
Yeah, like other nights that we've seen some of those track changes, and you guys said, okay, change this, change this, change that, haven't been done yet.
All right.
Okay.
Good. Um, we still don't have a quorum, so we can't, uh, talk about any more of the official business. Um, any parting words for us, Regina?
I don't think so, uh, John, you did want me to share the Ecos Housing Draft chapter with folks?
Um, well, let's just talk about housing kind of, not, not to solve anything, but just offline here. Um, housing, uh, there's so much going on with housing right now, it's crazy. The AIA Vermont has a housing strategy, uh, and some design surets actually being offered to communities right now. And I know that's underway. Um, Ecos is their own thing going, we've got, you know, every group out there is trying to solve housing, and it's, it's very tricky. Uh, so, having just a general awareness of what's going on, so that when our own housing committee comes to us with, uh, more than, I mean, we gave them a pretty interesting recommendation last time, which said, you know, let's, let's take as big a bite as we can right now on, on, on this, um, affordable housing and, and other, uh, similar, uh, initiatives. But, um, to get a big picture view of what everybody else is doing and, and where they are in their process, uh, so that we kind of know where we are in our process relative to all of that would be wonderful.
In terms of the other municipalities, you mean?
Yeah, I mean, there's, there's other municipalities and there's regional work happening, um, and, and statewide initiatives with, with the AIA Vermont. So, um, I'll try and stay on top of that, it's my, uh, subcommittee that's, that's kind of spearheading that. And, um, I know where, uh, you know, we've presented to a few people here and there. Uh, but, um, but when we've reached out to the regional planning commission to help with that, so, um, it's, it's ongoing, it's, we don't have any answers that we're still developing, uh, issues and, and trying to actually reach out to communities and, and dig right into what their specific concerns are and how they might take a piece of their community land and do something. Uh, you know, what do we wanna do, oh, we wanna design something, we gotta draw something, right? So, so we're gonna be doing that as the AIA Vermont. Um, but, but many others are doing things, and I think the more we're aware of what those things are, the better.
Yeah, and the legislature is surely talking to them. So, it'll be interesting, even by, you know, we may have more changes to make in the LDC by the time they're done. In May, so, we'll, we'll see how it goes. We, you may be putting duplexes in there whether you want to or not.
Yeah, that's right. And, and there's a fair amount of money involved, uh, with, with incentives and at least weatherizing and energy improvements. And, and, and I'm sure that any opportunity that somebody has to try and, um, you know, achieve some of the goals that the state recognizes are significantly in their favor, whether it be sheer quantity of housing or, or energy improvements to housing, uh, will probably have some pot of money that's available to them.
Just before we go, uh, I need to say, I'm gonna be away February the thirteenth to the twentieth, and also March thirtieth to April fourteenth.
Thank you, Robin, glad to see you tonight. Um, all right, uh, anybody else, final comments, last-minute announcements? Stay, uh, stay safe, get your snow shovels out. Uh, I'll take a motion to adjourn the meeting, please.
Uh, I'm, I moved to adjourn.
And those, those few of us present will, will say aye.
Aye.
Seconded, aye, yeah.
Thank you all.